Okay, it's seven o'clock. I'm going to call the New Glares Board Meeting to order. I look for an approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, motion carries. Item three, public appearances and citizens comments on items not listed on this agenda. Items will not be debated or acted upon at this meeting, but will be referred to the proper staff or committee if action is required. And please keep your comments to three minutes. Anyone that would like to speak? Okay?
Chris P. Schultz, owner of Rusture Room with John. John was going to be here today, but he was unable to due to family commitments, so he has me come here instead. We've been discussing this with other retail store owners in the village and we would like to propose an idea of a change in zoning for what we call Main Street, which is first fifth and second, the Z. To say that what we would like to limit it to retail, food and beverage and entertainment at both businesses in that district. To say, because that brings the most foot traffic to the downtown area. And place, you know, other types of businesses like offices and things can locate in other areas and it's not going to be detrimental to them. Not to say that they're, we wouldn't like grandfather and right people that are already there, but if new space becomes available or if if somebody would renovate a new area, we would like to have that proposal in place to say it should be a retail store, a food or beverage establishment, or perhaps an entertainment occurrence type of activity that would bring people to downtown in less. I know that there's other cities and towns that have done this with, you know, mixed success depending on what kind of area they are with our tourism and with the, you know, desire to not only attract people to our downtown area, but to keep them there. I think it's in everybody's best interest that we have that kind of a vibrant, you know, shopping, entertainment, eating experience in our downtown. So that's our, that's what we would like to present as an idea, but perhaps we can talk about with the board and the plan of commission.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. Move on to item four, the approval of the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent again. Second.
Favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, motion carries. Item five, new business. Consideration discussion alcohol beverage license class B beer, C wine, Alpine New, Alpine New Glares LLC Ashley Barnes agent.
That's me.
Yes, would you like to speak for a moment if you would?
Yep.
Come up, come up here.
Yes, sir. Will do. Hello, everyone.
Hi.
Well, since I'm the H N, I suppose I shall do the speaking. Are you coming, Harry?
Okay.
Please, the second gentleman.
So we're here tonight to propose the beer and wine license for the Alpine. If you guys don't know us, I go through all here and it only took me 15 years to convince them to move back. So New Glares has always been very special place to me and we're excited to be bringing something that we consider to be new and exciting to the community. We're really focused not just on retail, but I started a jewelry business two years ago that's been successful and brought a lot of people together. So that was a great starting point for the business. And then we've combined efforts together to build the concept for the Alpine, which is modern goods in a gathering place. So we're really looking forward to opening the beautiful building that is 130 Fifth Avenue, creating a unique, comfortable cozy space for people to come and hold their meetings here in town. We're looking forward to being able to offer small bites, food that people can take away. You know, you want to grab a sandwich, go to the park, have an opportunity to come in, get a snack, have a drink with friends, have a unique experience. An opportunity to also maybe try, you know, a mix of different things. In addition to curating some goods that will not be in competition with other local businesses, but will indeed support bringing traffic here and diversify what's available.
And we have included wine bar and wine and beer as part of that. So people can shop, they can have a glass of wine, they can have beer.
Have coffee.
Yeah, in that space.
Do you plan any outside eating?
There really isn't space there right now because you kind of just have the parking lot and then the front entrance.
It kind of depends what we can do. We have to see really what's possible, you know, with what we have.
And you have just the downstairs, not like we're roughing it and have the upstairs.
Yes, John and Melissa, the building owners have two Airbnbs upstairs.
Any questions?
Are you going to answer this? I like that.
It's good to have a business coming in there that's going to be.
And it's, you're right. It's a beautiful bill.
It's so beautiful. I want to hold different kinds of workshops that will also serve the community over time. Right now we're kind of opening things in phases because we took building on earlier than we anticipated, which is really exciting.
Great.
It's the best because it's going to give us an opportunity to really be in full swing by Christian link. And as we go into the next 12 months.
I think you'll probably evolve into what it is you eventually become.
Yeah.
The more time I spend there, the more that's happening. I start thinking, oh, yeah.
There's no quotas on these licenses, so we have as many available as the board wants for war. So there's no concern there.
I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve the beverage license class B beer wine. For the Alpine.
Okay, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, she carries.
Thanks guys. Your license will be ready tomorrow. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Good luck.
Yes.
Okay, item B, considerations discussion water reservoir project payment and disbursement request. That's 18 and I think we have somebody on Zoom for that. Lauren, do we?
Yes, we have Brian.
Hi, Brian.
Uh oh.
Uh, we can't, just hold on. I can't hear you.
I didn't be able to. We heard the. Try talking again, Brian. No.
Look here on his cap right corner.
That would mute him.
Oh.
Is it on hidden?
Can we just change the speaker? Try now.
I'm going to try and. Great. Actually, good evening, everyone. Um, yeah, we just had a few items to present to the group and get a little feedback on. The first I'll just share my screen here are the actually.
I can give you privileges here. There you go.
Uh, the first is to cover payments for this month. Um, we haven't done a project in the village since the water and sewer extension out to the up to the new, no longer new, but once upon a time, new brewery location south of town. So just to remind folks, the there are two ways the project is being funded. One is through the congressional earmark. We've Senator Baldwin's office and the other, the remainder is paid via rural development financing. Uh, for consideration tonight, we have two payment requests, one for contractor A, which is D N Tanks. They are the ones building the tank. Uh, and the other is for contractor B that is beyond excavating. That's doing a lot of the pipe work for it. So the first pay request is for 162,000 for DN Tanks. Now that represents work that was completed through September 25. Uh, just for reference, we are withholding 5% of the completed work here. Uh, and we'll be carrying that through the project to make sure everyone stays interested in finishing things up. But uh, for first consideration, we would recommend approval of this 162,748 dollars and 30 cents payment that will require an owner's signature. And I'll admit, not sure how you all generally pay your bills. Should I just keep going? Or do you want to keep this as a separate motion?
I think we can do it all on motion. Board is comfortable with that.
Um, if you go through your packet, you'll see there's, there's a number of other bills. Uh, this one here is for contract B. Looks a little different just because it's a different contractor. They have completed just the site work for the moment, uh, also withholding that 5%. And we're recommending payment here of 41,496 dollars and zero cents. Uh, that gets summarized in what's called a dispersment request in your packets. This is something that rural development requires in order to track all of the budget categories for a project. Uh, over on the right side, you'll see a bunch of budget categories along with the budgeted amounts, amounts that you previously requested funds for and what we're here for tonight is the column D, this claim. So if you tally up, um, all of the engineering costs, any legal costs, those two contractor A and contractor B costs and administrative costs for this particular month, we are just showing a request of 244,473 dollars and 61 cents. So that would be the motion we'd be requesting this evening is approval of those costs for the last month. From a project standpoint, if you've been up there, you'll see that there's quite a bit of activity now. The tank contractor has a crew from Texas onsite. They're working five or six days a week, uh, doing a lot of concrete pouring right now. The tank itself is actually poured on the ground and flat panels, and then they tilt them up and build it almost like a Lego set. Uh, so they'll be working on that for some time and then in about two weeks, uh, they'll have a crane on site that will assemble them all together into the dome tank. So with that, I'll, I'll stop talking for a bit and see if there's any questions on the project or questions on the paperwork.
Anybody got any questions? Do we have to take a short term loan off for this or did that?
Uh, we have the interim financing currently through Bank of New Glares.
So we have the bonds.
Yes, I have your question, but yes, they're available.
So is there a liner? How does it, how does concrete being put together in slabs with cold water?
Question, uh, the slabs themselves are coated and then there's a, uh, the seams themselves are all have water stops installed similar to a, a concrete tank at a wastewater treatment plant.
Well, as much as it pains us, we're in it.
I'm going to go ahead and approve.
It's hard for us to part, I know.
A second.
Okay, any further discussion? You're not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
She carries. Uh, and you see consideration discussion water reservoir architectural finish. That's page 44.
Yep, so I included in the packet, uh, just a brief memo from Town and Country as well. Um, and some color options for the tank as well as two different kind of architectural options for it. Um, and then the final page is what you've looked at before, which is kind of what we had in mind, but obviously we can change it based off of the village board's preference for colors. Um, I did reach out to our planner to just get his thoughts and I did include some of his comments um, in the notes section of this packet. Um, he thought, you know, white for the, you know, main background and then um, he recommended maybe gray or bluish gray for the arches. Um, that would be different than what we've kind of thought about before. Um, so I think.
We were leaning more towards earthy tones than that.
Yep. And I think that's fine too. I mean, I really do think that these pictures look really nice.
I, um, what was the cost of that additional decor or design, uh, the two tone, you know, the one tone?
Dollars way?
They are.
Thirty thousand.
Was it 130,000 additionally?
Brian would know.
That's correct. It's this item right here.
Oh, it's 130.
Hundred and thirty, yeah.
Hundred and thirty.
I think it's on TV Max, going through the year.
The thing that sticks out about this design to me is that this is just begging to be tagged. You know, like it's white, it's light colors, it's over the town. Best case, the seniors are going to tag it every year with their graduation year. Worst case, somebody is going to draw. Yeah. I, weren't, weren't we talking about red and Swiss themes originally?
We wanted it to blend more aesthetically. We didn't want it to stick out as a.
So be up on the hillside. Yeah, yeah. I, I don't think we've had any issues with our current tank with people vandalizing it.
There's also houses right around.
Yeah, it's true. I mean, eventually we will have houses around this.
Incentive.
I like that, but again.
I don't care.
I just think it's saying more to like the, I don't know what these colors are.
What you said.
Like that Navajo would be bad.
I would guess the pictures are like a gray and silver or something like that. Or like a winter in the silver. It looks like very gray, doesn't it?
No, I think it is pictures more. I've always thought it looked more like the pearl or.
Yeah, I like the Jeff one. It looks like pearls to me.
Yeah.
I, I mentioned Lauren. I don't like gray because it looks like concrete.
Well, I also feel like you're.
Doesn't seem like you're, you're really paying to have it painted.
Right.
Does anyone have a strong opinion?
Bright pink.
That's too strong.
I just think we keep a kind of earthy tones.
Right. So this or no?
Yeah, I don't know what the colors are.
We have to pick. So I, it kind of looks like maybe it's the pearl and white. Brian, do you know what colors are in that picture?
I don't think it's white. I think it's more.
Pictures are slightly different. Um, I don't know the names of them unfortunately, but if, if you'd like to, um, if you want to pick your favorite or top two, I think we can get them to mock up a, just a rendering of what it would look like.
I would also agree Navajo would be my second choice.
Or if they like that top picture, can we just say they like this top picture and have the concrete tank designers mock up whatever this picture is?
Absolutely. This, this contractor is the one that, that made that tank. So, uh.
Yeah, I like that.
The Navajo is part of like the pinky one or the?
Well, just like if you like one of these, if we can just say they like.
Yeah, I like.
Like that.
Yeah, I, I do like them. I mean, I like both, but whatever, whatever you guys decide.
I definitely like the top one too.
Yeah, I like the top one better.
But I mean, it's, you can see the, here it's shaded. The lower picture is shaded. You can even see the shadow.
And if we don't like it, Jesse will paint it for us.
No problem. You want to see tagging.
They are the same tank. That tank is actually the same tank. It's in Richland Center.
Can you, can you tell us our, um, in your experience, are these colors, what oftentimes a, a community will pick or are we picking something? I mean, unique to us or how, what have you seen in terms of?
A lot of times we see either this or or a community really wants to go all out. You know, really decorate it. Um, so usually this is this kind of, if you're looking to get it to blend in and.
That's all we care about. Yeah.
This would be pretty typical.
You said these two are at Richmond Center?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Oh, I.
So are we all kind of agreed that we want to mock up?
Sure.
Yeah. Do we need to make a motion for that?
Sure.
I move to have the color white, what's the first picture. I think, yeah, I think it's pearl, but.
Second.
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, motion carries. Great.
Tagging thing would be kind of cool though. From the, from the archer's standpoint, Mark had leaned towards what I call the taller arches instead of the shorter arches. Is that also what you were thinking? That's.
Yeah, I like it. I like the taller arches. I shall.
I just think if we got sick of it, we could.
We can color it up.
Getting homecoming week.
Uh, he just wanted to clarify, do we want the taller arches?
Yeah.
Okay. So that was like in the picture too, Brian?
Yes.
So basically you want it to look exactly like what the pictures.
Yeah.
The picture is great.
Perfect. Yep.
Do they want to show?
They will happy Richmond Center.
But you can do that. The, um, the Richmond Center one is a little taller than yours is totally, in case you ever drive by it, just for reference. Yeah, those are the taller arches.
Okay, do you need anything else from us, Brian?
No, we'll, uh, work with Lauren and the, the gang and doing the mockup and we'll see a lot more action as the days go by.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Thanks, Brian. Have a good night. Okay, I believe considerations discussion resolution 2424, accepting village of New Glares from paying Green County library tax. We do this every year.
Yeah.
Traditional.
Tradition.
I move to approve regulation 2424, exempting your village from Green County tax, so library tax. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, motion carries. Item E, consideration discussion resolution 2425, report appointment of full-time lease officer on page 15. Jeff, you want to speak to this?
Yeah, I can give a couple of things. Uh, she's currently an officer in Belvo. As she approached me when we had the opening, to come to this part of it, this will be the third one we've taken from Belvo. And I guess the good thing I'm looking at is we don't have to roll the dice and send somebody to the academy yet and be that A F B. And, uh, there's going to be a lot of turnover with the academy, some people not making it. So she's been doing good there. She passed everything. I got the she got the protest pad this week, the and psychological report. Everything's good. She's passed everything. Her background looks good. She's waiting for her phone calls and then.
How long has she been in Belvo?
Almost two years ago. So that's why I want to start her. Two years of experience should be started her career.
And she started either the end of October or during November?
Sometime in there. It all depends on she has to give her an announcement.
Oh, okay.
It might say you're done tomorrow and then now she may be starting next week.
Oh, right, but she can't, didn't you say that it takes like three months where she can actually?
Oh, yeah, she'll have to go through training. She'll have three months of training, twelve months field training.
But she'll be on the payroll the day that she comes here.
She won't be in the academy for like five, six months getting paid more than they can prove half of everything while we're still paying for somebody to cover the shifts. I mean, not going to lose. We have not had to put anybody in the academy yet and that's kind of on another.
Well, so is this with Bella, her first position?
Yeah. And she's got a history in her family. Her grandpa was a cop, her dad's currently a cop.
Oh, wow.
So she's, yeah, then a lot.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Taylor's kind.
The resolution for the appointment of Taylor.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, motion carries. Item F, consideration discussion 2025 to 2029 capital improvement plan, page 51.
Okay, this is the third time that we're talking about this. Um, I made some additional changes based off of some discussions. Um, so you'll see in my memo, I highlight some changes. Um, the biggest one being, uh, through the cemetery committee discussions, um, it was decided that it would be helpful to increase the endowment further to $400,000 with 300 coming from the village and um, 100 coming from the Swiss church. So that would generate $16,000 annually for cemetery operations and maintenance. Um, that just for sure, make sure we're covering our bills each year and doesn't rely on plot sales, um, which, uh, can really go up and down. Some years it'll be $20,000 and some years it'll be nothing. Um.
Do you, so do you get access to the endowment right away? I know at the Swiss Center, we have to wait a few years before.
So no, it's a three-year average, but when we put money in, we can either hold some out or we can tell them, hey, we want this amount to come out. We'll actually be getting 140,000 from Swiss church. So I think we'll probably use that 40,000 to just cover the, kind of cover while we wait.
Oh, really? First couple of years.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have, excuse me, we have somebody that's going to sell the plots.
Yes. So as part of this plan, we could hire a part-time person who works for, on average, four hours a week that would, um, handle the cemetery record management. Now, on a day-to-day, actually taking money to sell the plots, that's probably going to happen here at Village Hall, except we don't want, you know, somebody, I don't even know where this person is going to work. Probably going to work from home. I don't know exactly how that'll work, but financial side will be through Village Hall. But this person will take care of records, will, you know, help identify plots, talk to them about where they want to be buried, handle cemetery, like coordinating maintenance, will hire out maintenance for like mowing and things like that. So it's just somebody who's handling all of that knowledge.
We don't have them yet?
No. That would be, once we finalize taking ownership of the cemetery, we would look at hiring somebody to do that. Um, so to pay for that additional $100,000 for the endowment, it was also discussed about potentially paying in cash for some items next year, given that will have a surplus of likely over $200,000. So I switched the roof replacement and squad car replacement to cash funding. Um, so that's roughly $140,000 that we would be cash funding. That's to keep our debt capacity down to about what we had already originally discussed. So I'm basically just flipping out. Debt capacity down to about what we had already originally discussed. So I'm basically just flipping out. You know, those two items for the additional hundred thousand in the cemetery now, it actually would decrease the amount we're borrowing next year by a little bit. Um. So up to the village board on, this is the move you want to go. This was just kind of. Goff had mentioned that he was interested in adding an additional hundred thousand to the endowment and then also an interest in cash. Uh, funding some projects. The other uh slight change I made um in the eleventh avenue. Engineering budget, I added an additional seven thousand dollars um. For soil borings and sewer televising, which was not included in that original engineering estimate.
God, this is your idea? This is your idea? Oh, sorry, your idea.
Well, you you would wanted to add an additional hundred thousand dollars to the cemetery. Yes.
Yeah, based on what we needed for. Yeah, it was Mr. Spousy's idea. He's the chairman.
So the there, what what is, are there any reasons not doing this? Any reasons why you would not want to do this? It seems like.
So obviously, we're spending about a hundred and forty thousand dollars of surplus funds. Um, that would normally go into our surplus. So that's less money to go to surplus. Um. It's quite.
But they're not borrowing. To pay off them stuff either then.
Correct. Yep. Either money now or money later. Yeah.
And surplus, since you guys budgeted so well. Can't be used to cover any extra.
This is a perfect use of surplus funds. It's a one. Um, the one other thing I wanted to add, as we had a meeting last night at Fire District about the purchase of the radios. Uh, and they actually reconfigured the Fire District budget to take the radios out. Um, so that our annual payment would be less. Um, and then they figured out a way where we could just pay off our debt. That amount was thirty one thousand dollars. That's another item that we could use surplus funds to pay for instead of. Borrowing to cover that.
That could. Think?
No.
So my point was the surplus funds you can't use for another employee.
No, I would not do that.
Right, no, the reason for that, I'm not saying I want to do that. I just want that to be, no, yeah, right. So we can't just take that extra money because it's not going to be coming back next year. We don't know. So you can't use that for raises or anything like that.
You could do it for like a bonus, a one time bonus, but you, I would not do that for regular, like ongoing wage benefits. No way.
I was just kind of hoping that we would get bonuses.
You do every April.
Okay, so is this ready to make a motion on the answer?
Um, yes, uh, you could also, if you would like to add the radios into. The cash funding, you could also.
I think we should.
I would add to the. The radios would be um something we pay this year. Um, whereas technically the squad car and roof, we pay in cash next year. That's the only difference between those three. Radios come out this year, P D roof and squad come out next year.
We have surplus funds.
Yes, we have.
So I'd make a motion to do that.
Okay.
Michael K.
So. Remember, you made a motion to. To approve the capital budget and including with the addition of the thirty one thousand.
No, thank you.
Okay, we have motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
Both motion carries. Okay, one.
Library. I just, I'm not comfortable voting for a library this. Of this budget, which is ten thousand five square feet, so we've got some more opportunity to discuss.
Was that even in this?
It's in the C I P.
Oh, okay, and that was part of this.
Well, square footage isn't in the C I P, but the library is.
Backwatered against it because of the library and the C I P.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, see, I didn't understand. I didn't know what the hell you were talking about.
I didn't mean.
That's why, like, I didn't know what you meant. I get it. I understand. And your concern with that is because of the size and operating cost, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, but God, this could all, this is flexible. This can all change, correct?
Yes, I mean, it's just a budget number at this point. Obviously, we will get the four point two five million dollar grant and the village has. Uh, committed another five hundred thousand dollars. And then the. The library's one point two million is also factored in.
This number isn't tied to any square footage or anything. The only, the only caveat with this is the four point two five million has to be used to build the library. It can't be used for operating costs on the road.
And we applied for a nine thousand dollar or nine thousand square feet building, FYI.
Nine thousand internally?
Yeah, it'll.
Usable, whatever they call it.
It's okay.
But that's a flexible number, too.
Yep.
I think.
That was just maximum. We're not sticking with anything.
It'll be figured out through the design.
Exactly, yeah. So the internally usable space is nine thousand.
At this point, that's what you're looking at.
For in order to get the study rooms and the meeting rooms that are the whole reason for this.
Okay.
So I'm I'm lost, kind of a little confused. So where, what are we? We already voted.
We approved the C I P, but God had mentioned that he was voting against it. So that's the only reason we circled back to.
Oh, so we went back to that. Okay, I moved forward. So that's right. I lost. Okay.
Question of that.
We shouldn't be on item G, consideration discussion Police Department twenty twenty four budget amendment. It's on page fifty three.
Okay, so. The police department is on track to being very under budget again due to staff vacancies. Um, the total public safety budget is around eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars. That includes fire and EMS. Um, but it's projected at eight hundred and eleven thousand dollars, leaving forty nine thousand in surplus. Now, keep in mind. That is the surplus that we just talked about earlier. So it's not an additional fifty thousand to that two hundred sum we talked about when we talked about the budget.
Okay, and this is as it sits now, obviously, we won't know exactly where.
It's a projected number. Yeah. Um, so. Jeff has requested some items to use some of that surplus, not all of it. Um, so I've listed the uh the items that he's requesting. Um, we did something similar last year and we did not bring it to the board. And I thought this year it would be good uh to bring it to the board so you all know what we're doing with excess dollars because. Generally, good budget practice is if you're increased, if you're going over a line item, you should show where that's coming from. So that's exactly what I'm doing here. I'm saying we're reducing police patrol salaries by ten thousand dollars and then increasing these two budget lines by that amount. So you should see exactly where it's coming from and where it's going. Any questions?
So this is what Jeff wants.
Yeah, so the next version is doing the budget, I've been watching the budget, watching the money, watching the overtime on the progress shifts. Versus the overtime or it's costing the village more and our revenues coming in. We've got some extra money. So other years was kind of like our budget, we could do what we want. Like Warren said, we're coming, I'm coming in front of you guys with more. This is some stuff we needed that I was going to put in for budget initiatives for twenty. Twenty five budget that I can take care of this year and it's done and over with. And and I need the the laptop and I definitely need the two computers. The first net router, the supply cars, two of our supply cars. At FirstNet already, the other two of U S Cellular, over October, that weekend, U S Cellular went down. We were dead with those two cars and the rumors going around is U S Cellular is going to go under. And we lose, if we, if we lose, you know, those two cars and then we have to wait to get routers, wait to get the air customers. It's going to be horrible. FirstNet runs so much better, cleaner, faster, everything. It's like years ahead of U S Cellular.
U S Cellular sold a big chunk to T-Mobile.
Yes, and if they end up dropping U S Cellular, which is the top, and we have to wait till we get all new air cards. You know, I'm going to put the air cards into your your phones and your other thing. Everybody is saying U S dialers is. Not putting anything into their like infrastructure or anything anymore. We're. FirstNet got federal money to put cards all over the United States since nine eleven. So like they just added green colors and green color.
So you want to change suppliers?
Yeah, I want to change my other two cars. So all the cars are on FirstNet. And I eventually would have to do it anyways. I mean, it just makes sense, but it's like I got the extra. And I'd like to get it done and get it done out when we want to talk about it in twenty twenty five. Because then if you don't get this, I really need you aggressive in twenty twenty five budget. Motion to approve the twenty twenty four budget amendment.
Well, so if we.
Sorry.
If we make these purchases, does that mess with the cash purchases we've just talked about?
We have enough to cover both, but um because we projected around a two hundred and twelve thousand dollar surplus, which.
Might change because we are still waiting on some budget numbers to come in, but that's a good.
Solid guess. So yeah, I mean, if you add up ten plus the hundred and forty plus then thirty for the, we're still under two hundred thousand or about. Great. Um, so, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Both motion carries. Okay, item H, consideration discussion twenty twenty five budget workshop number two. Lauren and or Kelsey.
Another presentation here. All right, so you should have a memo in the packet like last time. So I'm just gonna jump right into, this is a little bit, um. I'm I'm going to have less background because I did that at the last meeting, but please feel free to bring up questions from our last workshop or this workshop. And again, this is informal, so feel free to interrupt me. So we'll start off with our room tax fund eleven. Um, so we collect room tax, which is five percent of hotel motel and other lodging gross receipts. Um, I have the breakdown there, so we actually give three percent back to the business owner. The twelve percent is retained by the village. And then eighty five, the rest of the eighty five percent goes to the chamber. Um, so room tax or the fund eleven tracks the just the chamber portion of those. Um, our revenue and expenses are a budget at eighty thousand. That's just a guess. Um, and the village portion of our revenue is actually uh reported in general fund in our clerk fees section.
Let me just say here, as long as Ivan and the board, the room tax, and you can probably back address this a little more. Um, has been at five percent. And I remember when we tried to increase it to five point five and we got a lot of pushback. Um, are we ready for a five point five or would we get a lot of pushback? Or are we beyond this now that we're doing the budget work?
I think the hotels would still be pretty upset about it. I don't think it would actually affect them. In reality, but I think they would still get.
Because I know just traveling myself, there are home taxes that are ten.
Oh, yeah, Middleton is like eighteen percent.
Yeah, it's just a long way that they're still at five. I don't think five point five, six or seven. But then are we in a position right now to make that change? That has to go.
Has to go to the tourism commission. Might be too late for budgeting purposes, but it's certainly a conversation, especially at our next tourism tourism commission.
But so as far as that goes, the point five percent, part of the reason that came up was because. There was some talk about giving that point five to the Shalay of the Golden Fleas, which isn't an option. Like, that's not how room tax works.
He said it isn't.
It is not. The state has very strict parameters for how it can be used and by who. Um, but secondly, the new hotel, when the hotel restaurant reopened, we did the math, you know, because. Once it's open, even if it's only at like fifty percent. Capacity, we're looking at conservatively an an extra ten to fifteen thousand in room tax a year. So it's conservatively. So, um, I mean, we're going to be fine. The chamber is going to be fine. They'll have plenty.
No, they never had rooms before, so they never paid room tax. So this will be.
Nice bump.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, so that helped.
And I think it's important to note, too, the eighty thousand dollar number for next year is very conservative. You just really don't know. Um, but we are on track to be over ninety thousand this year.
Okay.
Um, so.
The hotels. Actually told us they were going to be complete by the end of September next year.
Probably closer to like end of years.
Yeah, now they're talking January to start the work and they think they're saying, they're saying ten months.
Well, I thought they already started.
Okay.
They've done like some selective demo.
I have friends going through there saying they were.
They put some like test holes in the floors here and there, like just to see what's in there and that's about it.
Okay.
I just wanted to bring that up to see where we.
Uh, no, uh, well. The law house is the by far the biggest contributor of the room tech, so they obviously have the most rooms. Um, but Airbnbs pay this. Um, that's the other portion of it. That's honestly where, well, tons will definitely push this back, but. They're Airbnb owners, I don't think.
I think it has, yeah, it surfaced a number of times and it's never gone anywhere.
Rebecca said something I didn't even think about. You know, hotels can have like seven rooms in it.
And the rooms are expensive everywhere in town. I think.
I just talked to somebody that went to Nashville and they were paying five hundred and sixty dollars a night for a room in Nashville. I have no desire to go to Nashville. I really don't anymore now.
Wow.
So let's move on.
All right, moving on.
On page forty. Fifty five.
The.
Do you know that for a fact?
The one million dollar one?
I don't know. Yeah, right, should start construction in twenty twenty five.
They're saying January.
Yeah.
They got their money.
Well, they're saying January.
Yeah.
They still want, they want more money. They're still, they're still looking for more donors, but they've got enough to. To start.
Yeah, so you're wondering if they got their tax credit.
Yeah, that's what they're, it's holding them up.
They they're, they are eligible. They're just working through the design now to make sure they're meeting all of the historic requirements.
It's a complicated project, but a really important.
Absolutely.
Really.
Yeah. All right, employee payment payout fund. Um, this is a fund we use for retiring employees. Who are eligible to be paid out. Sick or, um, yeah, so this payout fund is the fund, the North Shore Bank account for employees. You have to be here ten years. You get half the paid out. And then after twenty years, you get your full sick leave paid out. Um, and once you accumulate so many sick hours, I can't remember off the top of my head, Jeff would probably know. But um then we pay every year into North Shore. So then when a general fund employee retires, so this would not include a utility. A general fund employee retires, such as Lyndon in twenty two, we paid out thirty two thousand dollars.
I'm in favor of doing it every year.
It it is something we really should start doing again if we can swing it.
Yeah, that's just a lie.
Yeah, and and I do also want to add that we aren't looking for Jeff to leave us like ever. But it's just, it's literally just logistical because he is. Out of the general fund employees, we're all either newer or he's just been here for a gazillion years. Yeah, sure. So, yeah. We do not have anything budgeted in twenty twenty five for this, but it is something we should consider in the future contributing to. Um, because, yes, one day, unfortunately, Jeff will leave the village. Fifty to sixty years from now, but um it will happen and we will have to pay that.
Jeff now probably leaves.
To do it annually.
Well, so to put in perspective, if we want to budget money to put into this, let's say we want to put in five thousand dollars into this next year, which would be a great annual payment into this. We're paying out between, I would say right now it's around six thousand um for Jeff. Um, but we do have some surplus funds, but I think five thousand next year is a good place to start. We have next year covered with surplus in this fund right now. Um, so it's not like we are going to be running out of negative. Um, but yeah, I would say that five thousand dollars, just take in mind that. Well, that will be cutting out. I mean, that will be creating a. Well, that will be cutting out, I mean, that will be creating a bigger deficit in the general fund in terms, so you'll be putting more, applying more surplus to the general fund. Cause you'll be allowing tax dollars to this fund.
So this, this means, this is an expense, expense that you are, has not now in the budget.
Correct, correct.
Move from the surplus to the.
Um, well.
Last year was like sixty thousand, what?
A little less than that. Um, it was only at seven, but then we got some disheartening news about utility pilot. But then we got some better news about the fire district budget. So I wanna say we're still around fifteen thousand if of surplus needed for the general fund.
The whole.
Yes.
Versus last year, which was significantly.
Yes.
So I'm in favor of pooling these monies up.
Okay, and I don't need a motion for it because you'll approve all this when we adopt the budget in November. I'll just make a change. Yep.
Yeah, I think that's.
So five thousand is what you're comfortable with? Um, that, we're paying out about six, between six and seven thousand.
I think well, that's about some budget.
Yeah.
Only accumulate like sixty hours of.
No, that's comp time. Sick time, uh, all of our full-time employees get twelve days of sick time a year. Um, so twelve times, you know.
But that can't be uh, carry over.
Yes, it can. Cause in, in WRS, in um, the state retirement system, sick time can be accumulated to then be paid out to help cover insurance premium costs once you retire.
Without limit?
Uh, I don't, yeah, I don't believe there's a limit. Like I said.
Pay, pay him so much.
The village doesn't pay it out until you.
Right, so like when, when the previous clerk retired, we paid out almost thirty three thousand dollars to North Shore Bank to help her cover health insurance premiums.
Okay.
Alright, moving on. Uh, our tids. So we have tid three, which is the brewery and tid four, which is downtown. Our increment generated, so we don't know the exact increment yet, because we need to know the mill rate to do that. And uh, that is not solidified yet due to the other taxing entities. Um, so I'm just showing you what the twenty four increment was. So tid three generated two hundred and ninety thousand in increment. It has a fund balance at the end of two thousand or twenty twenty four at four hundred and two thousand four ninety five. That's because every year we've been making transfers between tid three and tid four. Um, expenses are budgeted at four hundred and forty three thousand. Um, those add up to, uh, well, that's what it adds up to, but that includes debt service payments of two hundred and eighteen thousand and then the transfer to tid four of two hundred thousand dollars. Um, this tid will be closing in twenty twenty six. Um, so in twenty twenty seven, we will no longer be collecting increment. It'll be going out to the taxing entities. We estimate, or I estimate that a rat will get around a hundred thousand dollars back to our general uh, property taxes, uh, which will be a very nice boost to our budget. Um, it's definitely something the board should be thinking about. Um, you know, when that time comes, what we wanna be using that money for. Um, obviously, we've already created a little bit of hole in our budget currently that we'll need to cover, but then we will have some additional funds to figure out how we'll use.
Is it unreasonable to say the stormwater utility fund is underwater, no pun intended, right?
Um, we haven't. We'll get there. I will get there in a moment.
Getting ahead of us. So is that a hundred thousand include their new addition, the brewery putting on?
No.
No.
Okay, so that.
So that'll be.
And it's also important to note, starting next year, we actually budgeted Lauren, part of Lauren's salary and my salary out of tid three as well. So we'll have salary and benefits coming out of tid three and tid four, which we're allowed to do if, if we can show that we spend that time, which we both.
So I have to find that money.
Spend your time, what do you mean?
These separate corporations, what, what, are they just separate on our books?
What are you talking about stormwater? Fun for, are you, are you?
You've got stormwater utility and then you get down.
You're way ahead of us all. So walk a little bit. You're still back on.
We're on.
Three and four. You're two, two, uh, places ahead of us. We'll get there. Do you have anything more to say on?
Uh, yes. So, um, so tid four is the downtown. Um, in twenty four, it generated a hundred and forty two thousand seven three three. Uh, we do estimate that that will go up pretty significantly in twenty five, because for some reason, the assessment of the downtown went up a ton. We have no idea why. Um, it went, actually went down in twenty four, so some weird things are going on with that. I don't know if it's like behind a year or what. We, we are investigating, investigating that further, but likely it'll be a higher increment than.
I mean, we'll take it.
Thousand, yeah. Um, the fund balance in tid four is one point one million. Um, that's good news, cause we'll be spending a million dollars out of that tid to pay for the uh, Glare Hotel development. Um, we have forty five thousand dollars budgeted in expenses, and as I mentioned, the one million dollar, which will likely come out in twenty five. But I did not include it in the budget, because I have no idea timing wise. Um, it's already approved by the board. Obviously, we'll come to you once that's happening. But um, didn't wanna include in the budget if we don't really know when it'll happen. Any questions on tid? Not a move on. Alright, sewer utility. Uh, so this funds our wastewater treatment plant. Our projected operating income in twenty five is one point eight billion. And so are our expenses. So we do have a balanced budget with the sewer plant. Um, just for some background, several, you saw the new phosphorus removal building that was added. Um, that was a five million dollar loan through the clean water fund program. So you, sewer utility rates were increased in early twenty twenty three to help cover the cost for that loan. Um, in twenty twenty five, we hope to work with strand engineering to develop a prioritized asset inventory of the sewer plant. As you heard on the tour, uh, we have a lot of old stuff, and so we can't replace that all tomorrow. But what this inventory is gonna do is go through all of our stuff, figure out what are the most important aspects, like critical functions? And then what are those costs? And basically create like a prioritized list of, we need to tackle this one first, then this, and then this. So that's what Strand's gonna help us with next year, and that's included in our budget.
Good thing.
Do we have enough money to get here and twelve hundred dollars of the tools?
Yes. I told them that. I told them that in the past, that they should get tools.
Okay.
You got that Scott.
I'm just, I am hesitant to spend money right off the bat, just to defend myself.
Yes, no, no, I'm not a tech to you. Sorry. No, our, our staff are, you know, work with very little money and put up with crappy tools, and I appreciate that. But yeah, we do need to invest in some new tools for them. Sure. Okay, now we're on stormwater utility. Um, so the income generated from this utility helps fund storm related, stormwater related expenses. Um, so that includes, we do street sweeping, uh, leaf and brush pickup, um, and then capital improvements as well. Um, so in twenty twenty five, our projected operating income is two hundred and fifty eight thousand and our expenses are three oh three. You'll see that that is a deficit. The, the, the reason is that each year we pass an ERU increase. Um, equivalent residential unit. Um, that's looking at kind of all of our expenses, operations and maintenance. It's something that Keller, our utility office manager, does. Um, so that is not completed yet, so that'll come to the next board meeting, but that will increase rates uh, if passed by the board. And that will get our income up to a level that will cover our expenses.
Good.
So this is a process we do every year. We go through and determine what the expenses are and then increase the rate to cover that. Did I cover your question?
One of them, yes.
Okay.
Well, the other one?
Sure.
So you've got fund fifty is both electric and water?
Yes.
But you're obviously keeping them separate.
Yes, we do. We have fifty ten, which is electric, and fifty twenty, which is water, but they share a cash account.
What do you mean they share a cash account? I thought our cash account was the one that was in the general.
Yeah, so when I say cash account, I mean each fund has a cash allocation account. So like fund ten has one, fund twenty five, fund twenty one. They all have cash allocations accounts, so when we do um, journal entries, like let's say we're doing a check run and one of the checks is um, paying for the electric utility. When I code it to fifty ten, five, 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 blah, blah, blah. It's adjusting that cash on the background. So then at the end of every month, you know, you wanted to know how much of the checking was utility and how much of it was village. That's what that allocation does. So then I can type in fifty zero zero one 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 and see.
But they are two separate.
Yeah. They're this, they're under one.
Fifty twenty?
They're under one fund separate. I would call them sub-funds, if you will. Yes.
Um, have, have we already had a proposed budget for the utility, all the utilities? Have we seen that?
That's what you're seeing right now. Meeting today.
That's what?
This meeting today.
But this isn't the whole budget. This is the summary. Okay, that's what it is.
So yeah, obviously my slides don't have the.
I just didn't realize that was what.
I need to go back to what you have mentioned. So the subcategories, so you have the budget. You have operating.
Yep, so if you look at the fifty, fund fifty budget that's in your packet, you'll clearly see that we have fifty ten revenue and expenses first. And then that would be electric.
What page you're on?
I'm on page seventy seven and seventy six.
Okay.
And then if you flip to the next pages, you'll have fifty twenty, um, revenue and expenses, which are the water portion.
Okay.
So we budget for them completely separate. They just are under the same fund.
I get it. Okay.
So for the electric utility, we have projected operating income at a little bit over three million, but our expenses are at three point two million. However, this income does not factor in new rates. Those go into effect sometime in twenty twenty five. The reason it's not factored in is we don't know when the rates are gonna go into effect. And we also don't know how much rate increase we're going to have. So it makes sense honestly to just leave it as is until we have more information. Um.
Could we run the deficit though?
We ran very lean this year and we had to dip into some reserves, so I, we can do it again. Um. Hope, thankfully, we are going through the PSC right now, like they are reviewing it. We're getting questions. We're going back. So I anticipate early twenty twenty five, likely the water rates will go up first and then the electric utility. So yeah, the projected deficit is around two hundred thousand there, but again, it's likely not gonna be that bad.
Why do you think residential sales are gonna be down a hundred thousand from last year?
That's the one that runs these numbers, so I, I can ask her. Are you talking?
Then you put it in twenty twenty five, you put it in a million one, that's what it was in twenty twenty four budget. You, you really think you're off a hundred grand? It's just.
Are you, oh, you're talking electric? Alright, where we at?
I'm just curious, that's not.
I can maybe answer.
Where, so you budget, she budgeted one point one million in twenty twenty four and is budgeting one point one again in twenty five.
Yeah.
Um, I think her year and, well, I think some of this residential sales do has to do with solar. Um, I could be wrong about that.
Okay.
But that would impact that. Correct.
Okay.
So I, and the one million might be, still might be, I mean, it might be over that.
Also, we had a more mild winter and that can really impact electric.
Yeah, yeah. So that might be fact. This is very similar to like snow and salt removal. I mean, you're really just guessing at what people are gonna use.
Well, the budget, the, let's go to the bottom line. Plus of what individual things probably isn't very helpful, but they budgeted two point nine five one. But she's projecting two, five, six, four. That's a four hundred thousand dollar drift.
Mm-hmm.
So it really sold four hundred thousand less power?
Over there in this.
Maybe I'm, maybe I don't understand what's, what I'm seeing here. You budgeted two nine five one.
And she's estimating two point five. Yep, so if you own a large commercial sales and my guess, once again, I'm not, not usually, but a lawn house, but in huge solar unit, or yeah, huge solar unit there, that would be coming out of the large commercial sales. Um, and then I don't know, I know Jack links in the brewery are other large customers. Um, and I don't know.
For twenty twenty three, you were two eight. It just looks like a lot, huh? I mean, that, by all of my, how many, when you say solar is coming on?
Right, but when you look at the individual lines, the two lines that are being, or the lines that are being affected are the sales lines. So it's truly what people are using. We're guessing on what people are gonna use, and then we're seeing the actuals of what people are using. All I'm saying is solar affects that, because obviously when they switch to solar, they sell the bill, but it's nowhere near as much as it was.
So, so what you're saying is that in oh four, the landhouse came online. That's the only big solar user.
What do you mean in oh four?
Twenty four, twenty twenty four.
Right. I, yeah, I got, like I said, I don't know if Jack links in the brewery did any. I have no idea. Yeah, I just know that larger, the larger consumer system, Jack links, the brewery, Roy's Market, uh, the lawn house.
Okay.
The brewery is not.
One, one of the disadvantages.
System. They're on a line.
Oh, okay. Well, they, aren't they on our system down here? They are.
This one. But the hilltop, hilltop is.
I think they're still considered a large.
One of the disadvantages to not having an or, a leadership organization, a board, or what do they call it?
Commission.
Commission. We only talk about this stuff fifteen minutes in a year.
Mm-hmm.
Nobody else pays and charges, pays them and grant, and pays and charges at the same rate, except us. If you, if you live, if you're Chris Coobley with a solar installation at the edge of town, he, he gets charged twelve and he pays and they pay him six. In other words, there's, they're, they're covering their overhead by having a differential.
That's all regulated by the PSC.
Um, it is hurting us.
Yeah, there's only so much we can.
Well, I just think those guys gotta get on the stick. I mean, among other things, you do wanna encourage people to do installations. Let's say the school district decides to cover all their roofs with this. That's just a huge amount of roof that they can put in. They could put in fifteen, twenty thousand square feet of solar panels, just like the same, virtually the same size of that thing went and brought it. And it's a good thing, you know, we're using less power to the green, blah, blah, blah. But, and, and we ought to encourage people to do that by saying, let's. I, I don't know where to intersect with these guys, but they're just sitting on it and can't. The last time I talked about it, well, we're really thinking about it. Well, you haven't done anything about it. What the hell good are you?
When you say these guys, who are you talking about? Who are these guys? What do you mean?
Our organization.
WPPI, I think that's what he's referring to.
Okay. They're, they're, I love it. I mean, I, I rarely get a bill more than a few dollars, because my solar produces more than I use, more than I use for water, more than I use for sewer. I mean, my last bill was like twelve bucks for the whole thing. But that's not sustainable, you know?
But right now, the cost, the cost to put in solar is not sustainable for a lot of average income families. I mean, solar is not a cheap option.
Tell it to Hans.
I'm not telling anything to Hans.
Right? And wait for the school district. All those roofs are ready to go.
I will add, at least from in terms of the financial picture for the electric utility, one of our biggest lines is how much power we buy from WPPI. And so we don't have to buy as much power, cause we have so much solar, that, I mean, that will even.
I understand, but it can't be this, right? You can't have them both in and out at the same number.
Right.
Because not, then there's nothing to pay, you know, by definition, right?
Right.
You can't fix the truck.
Right, we still need to be profitable.
You, you all deal with those guys more than I ever will, but I think we ought to start saying, you gotta come up with something. Everybody else has figured it out. What are you doing?
I know they're working on it.
Yeah, well, that's what they said last year and the year before that.
I know it's a big issue for them, cause yeah, the customers are, their customers.
But what I'm afraid of is that they're gonna do, that they're not gonna give us time to build, uh, they're not gonna allow that, that uh, in and outnumbered be the same. For a period of time, like say five years, so the people are encouraged to put it on, that pays their cost. That's what I'd really like to do. And then in the sixth year, start doing the differential. That's my rant for this last hour.
Alright, water utility. So projected operating income is six eighty seven. Again, this does not factor in new rates. Our expenses are budgeted at six thirty five, so we have a projected surplus of fifty two thousand. I think we are pretty conservative on the expenses for this one. Um, and obviously the water reservoir debt service is not on here yet. Uh, cause we are not paying that yet. So keep that in mind. Um, just some updates on the water utility. The reservoir should be in service by the end of twenty twenty four, if all goes well. Um, but we'll continue the project into twenty twenty five with the SCADA improvements.
And that's a twenty year debt?
Correct. Yep, that's the US. Yep. Alright. Moving along, revolving loan fund, fund eighty. Um, this is the fund that pays out the facade improvement grant program. Uh, our expenses are budgeted at forty thousand dollars, which is the maximum amount we uh, give out in a year for that program. Um, the revenue budgeted is only two thousand eight seventy nine. The remaining amount will actually be covered by fund balance. Um, the revenue budgeted is only two thousand eight seventy-nine, the remaining amount will actually be covered by fund balance. We already have enough in there to cover the forty thousand, and since we're not using it, might as well use what's there instead of continuing to add more. And we need that money, so this is funded by T I D four, and we really need that money in T I D four because of projects. And one, one other thing I'll highlight that I would like to look at in twenty twenty-five is maybe. Uh, relooking at the revolving loan program, which is underutilized, I think we've had like one in the last, two in the last. Five years or something.
Like fifteen years.
What is it?
So, uh, basically the village gives a loan to new businesses to help them get going. Um, and then they, it's a very. It's a gap financing thing, um, and. Uh, other programs do this, so Green County Development Corporation does a revolving loan fund. The, um, Southwest Wisconsin Regional Plan and Commission has their own revolving loans program. I think we don't need to be in that business because there's other people who are more knowledgeable doing it, and so. In twenty twenty-five, I would like to relook at what we do with that money because it's just sitting there. And, um, we could be giving it out to businesses in other ways, we could have Green County take it over and give it to Newglers businesses. I think there's options, but. And I would love to look more into having Green County step in, only because. This does add a considerable amount of financial, it's not hard, it's just time for me. So if Green County already does it and they're good at it and they know what they're doing, I'd rather fund Newglers businesses through Green County. So like our money still stays with Newglers.
Yeah.
They just handle the administrative. And they're interfacing with.
Right.
New businesses way more than.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I feel like, yeah, they have a better ability to advertise this too.
So are these standalone businesses, structures, or can you move into a building, start it, purchase a building? Start a business?
Either or.
Either or.
So Cow and Quince was one that used this when they started. Um, so if you remember when they came in to the building back here, they were one that used it. Um, and it, it worked for them, I mean, it, it started that business.
So if you move into a building that's not yours and rent in there, that is a little.
From what I understand, it's for. Yeah. Yeah, because I believe it's like for capital. Right, right, I don't think it's a lease agreement kind of thing, but I could be wrong.
Okay.
We haven't had to give any, so we're not super knowledgeable on the. Yeah, right now I'm just managing, I get payments randomly throughout the year from Bank of Newglers, who is the middle person when these people pay. And so then I'm figuring out interest principal.
Yeah, I like the other idea that use it a little more for Newglers like Green County to.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
So, something to look at in twenty-five. When we have more time. Alright, um, so next steps, obviously we'll have some more discussion here, but, um, the next meeting, which is Wednesday, November sixth. Uh, just a reminder, not a Tuesday because that's election day. Um, we will be having a public hearing, so we did post this in the newspaper. Um, this meeting, uh, will include discussion on some recent changes that Kelsey had mentioned about general fund. And this will be the last chance to make changes before the adoption meeting, so. Please bring any feedback to that meeting, because we would really love to not have any changes. Going on November nineteenth, we'd like to have final.
Right.
Adoption on November nineteenth, if we can't adopt on the nineteenth, we're going to have to have a special meeting to adopt in November, because we can't wait.
So does that mean that your, your capital budget is approved at that meeting?
For twenty-five.
Which is the library.
It's not the library. Library is in twenty-six. For the village portion, to five thousand.
Uh, but you're going to be doing planning and stuff, where's that coming from? Architectural fees go down through the list.
That'll be part of the grant, they have library funds. Our four five hundred thousand dollars will come in twenty-six.
Okay. Uh, the meeting on the sixth or the seventh of August?
Correct. And I would say these are two of the most important meetings to be at, so I would please plan to be here. Um, especially the public hearing one, because if the public does come out, it's important that they see they're for a full board and can ask questions about budgets. Then just a quick thank you to both Kelsey and Beth and department heads for all their work putting together these budgets, it's a lot of work, a lot of time. Um, so, thank you. Lauren too, yeah.
So do you need some higher emotion?
No. Any other feedback or questions or?
Anything from the rest of the board? Okay, no parts in rec, no public works, no finance personnel and no president's report, okay, announcement. The village board will adjourn in closed session pursuant to state statutes nineteen eighty-five one C. Considering employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee. To which the governmental body of jurisdiction or exercise responsibility require a closed session. It may reconvene in open session pursuant to state statute nineteen eighty-five two, employee compensation matters. So.
Your role call.
We need a roll call. You ready?
Yep, back to software. What do I just, that you want to go into this? I do.
Yes.
Jesse Donahue.
Yes.
Bob Thompson.
Yeah.
Peggy Cruz.
Yes.
Ryder Trumpman.
Yes.
Hey, let me get the door.
I'll get it.